Scott.
Here.
Commissioner Kling. Vice Chairman Garrison. Chairwoman Masse.
Here. Now, first order of business is to approve the minutes from the special meeting held on Thursday, September 8, 2022. Do any of the commissioners have any corrections or additions?
No.
None.
None, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye.
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 Unanimously carried. Our next order of business is informational reports and updates. Mr. Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission, good evening. As you've noticed, you got to push pretty hard. We ask that you please speak into your microphone so the sound gets picked up. Couple things I will bring up. First is we do have a new commissioner joining us, Commissioner Nelson. If you want to give him just a minute to introduce himself.
Yes, thank you, Bob Nelson. Looking forward to working with the commission and the community. We've been here about a year now and love the area, love what's going on, and looking forward to helping out in the public sector.
Madam Chair, Commission, just to clarify, I know we have some people in the audience here, there was an item that was supposed to be on this agenda, notifications went out, legal notice went out, it has been pulled. So if you're here for the Silverado project, that will tentatively be back for the November 21st meeting, which will again be held at this location. We can't discuss that tonight, so it's obviously not on the agenda. Speaking of the November 21st meeting, just to make the commissioners aware, that is the Monday before Thanksgiving, so hopefully you all can still attend. We don't have any plans to change that unless we can't get commissioners here. Second reading of the cluster subdivision will be at council tomorrow night, and that's the one you guys recommended approval for, I believe, in August. As you know, we canceled the joint meeting with HPC, we're going to look at rescheduling that for early November if we can. And one last item, Walking on Main is happening Saturday, November 12th down in Old Town. We will have a small little booth or table set up to kickstart the general plan update that's coming this next two years. So if you're interested, you will be given information on that input as we move forward with it. But the first official kind of announcement will be at Walking on Main on November 12th.
Thank you very much, Mr. Director. We don't have any old, or now, the next order is the call to the public. If anyone from the public would like to speak on something that's not, that's not on the agenda tonight, please fill out one of the forms on that table under the clock back there, and you can come forward, and we will give you three minutes of time.
Madam Chair, Ron Corbin, currently the city manager. I just did the math, and Scott has now depressed me. This is my last P&amp;Z meeting. And so I just wanted to take a minute, especially for those of you that I've worked with for a few years, Madam Chair, you and others, I just want to say how appreciative I am of the work that you have done and will continue to do on behalf of the residents of Cottonwood. I am very proud to have worked with this board. I believe that you guys volunteer and give of your time, and your care and your commitment to this community is something to be commended. And I have been very pleased to work with you over these last four years, and I just want to say, my call to the public should be at the end, not really, but I wish it was, but I didn't want to miss this opportunity to say thank you to all of the commissioners. And I'm leaving you in great hands. As you know, Scott became the director of P&amp;Z a couple of years ago, and is doing a fantastic job. Gary was, was one of our newest hires, is no longer that, is just doing a bang-up job. And the recent hires we've done is just, you're in great hands in our community development team with our planners and all the other staff. So I just wanted to publicly say thank you for your service to the community and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much, Ron, and thank you for your many years of service. Anyone else from the public that would like to speak? All right, I don't see anyone else, so we're going to move on. We don't have any old business, so we are now moving on to new business. Our first item on the agenda tonight is Z22-006, a zone change from R1 to a planned area development. This is situated at 48 South Candy Lane, 259 West Mingus Avenue, and 250 West Mingus Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners. I'm Gary Davis with City Community Development. This is a rezone proposal from R1 to PAD. Location is generally on the northwest corner of Willard Street and Mingus Avenue, with portions of the site detached, south of Mingus Avenue, west of Candy Lane, and between Candy Lane and Willard Street. The surrounding land uses to the east is the Cottonwood Oak Creek School Complex. To the south is church and the three-story Highland Square Apartment Complex, and a vacant older PAD approval to the south, and the, and some medical offices getting near the hospital to the south. To the west begins the strip of commercial offices and retail on its way over to Highway 89A on Mingus Avenue. To the northwest is the Blowout Creek, the ravine that Blowout Creek flows through, sometimes called Del Monte Gulch. And the, on the other side of that ravine, about 400, 500 feet to the west, is the single-family Verdi Heights neighborhood with Verdi Heights Drive and a number of single-family homes up there. Directly to the north of the property, northeast, you can see Willard Drive is a small dirt road that's a city right-of-way going north from the northeast corner of this property. That's, that's also a single-family residential area. And that, everything you see in the yellow is zoned R1, single-family. To the southeast in the R3, there is the, the Senior Care Center, and that's a three-story building as well. The proposed rezone to PAD is consistent with the general plan land use designation. This map shows the land use designations, the purple area is PLD, which stands for Planned Development, which envisions PAD zoning, Planned Area Development zoning, to be approved in these areas. Again, to the northwest is the single-family LR, which means Low Density Residential. To the east is the public and semi-public uses, the school district. PLD area also exists to the south. Project details in the proposed master development plan, which a PAD is always subject to, the, the proposal is for 397 multifamily units. That would be divided into 355 apartment units, 42 townhomes, also 19 single-family homes, although this would not be a single-family subdivision, it would just be on one lot, and all units would be for rent. And a clubhouse facility would also serve the residential. In the applicant's materials, they commit to providing at least 10% of the units as workforce housing rate, which is, which is something that's normally described as being affordable to people or households with lower than 120% of the median income for the area. Also, some commercial zones, or commercial uses proposed here within the PAD, about 15,000 square feet of medical office, and about 39,000 square feet of storage uses. Also included in this request is a three-story height request. Normally, our zoning ordinance puts a cap on heights at two-and-a-half story. Proposal here is for three-story, which, which can be approved through a PAD. The apartments at, to the very top would be measured about 38 feet according to the elevations that were provided by the applicant, and the storage would be about 35 feet in height. This is the overall site plan, showing again the location, west of Willard Street, north of Mingus Avenue, and a few areas, south of Mingus Avenue and southwest of Candy Lane. The light blue would be the three-story apartment units. The red is the proposal for the townhomes, which would be two stories in height. And along the west boundary of the site, along the ravine, would be the single-family homes. Those are shown in yellow, and those would be the first thing that would be visible from the neighborhood, single-family neighborhood across the ravine. And in purple, there's a clubhouse shown, kind of the backwards L shape in the middle of the project, that would be a clubhouse serving the residential community here. To the southwest corner of Mingus Avenue and Candy Lane is a proposed medical office. Again, this is very close to the Verdi Valley Medical Center. And to the east of the, of that, to east of Candy Lane and the Highland Square Apartments, would be the storage facility. Zooming in on the plan, this is showing the landscape plan for the north portion of the property. At the very north end of the property, the very northeast corner, a driveway is proposed that would line up about with the driveway that serves the, that, what used to be a hospice facility on the east side of, of Willard Street. On the west side, that's where the current Willard Drive access would come in. That access would be consolidated with this paved entrance and would leave the project about the northeast corner, north of, north of the Willard Street, Willard Drive intersection to serve houses on the, on the Willard Drive section. And there's also a house, you can see it just on the opposite north side of the, the property line here, that's on Graham Street, that would also be served by, by an easement through the, the property. The property, again, we show the single-family homes on the west side against the ravine property line, that kind of jagged property line goes along the, the ravine. And the blue squares are the apartments. In between the apartments is the parking area. Parking would be accommodated both in garages under some of these units, as well as in parking lots, which are located in between the buildings, not out front of the buildings, not so visible from the street, and would be accommodated with on-street parking. The streets would be lined with parking and trees, with, and sidewalks, these are private streets, and this would be a grid system that would be, usually this type of arrangement is very conducive to a walkable environment with, with sidewalks, under trees, separated from the street by on-street parking. Moving to the south. There's the center of the project, again, the, the L-shaped clubhouse along the edge of the ravine there, grid streets going through the project, accessing parking lots with, in between the buildings. And to the very southwest, we see west of Candy Lane and south of Mingus, the purple rectangle is the proposed medical facility, two-story medical office facility, and the red squares are townhomes, again, two-story townhomes. In the center of the area that's not highlighted, that's, that's the existing Highland Square Apartments, a three-story structure, and just to the east of that is part of this project, that is a one-story piece of property that is being designated for a storage facility, and that would be a storage facility that is self-contained, so there's no fencing around it, it's not a, not envisioned to be a self-storage, typical mini-storage type of facility, it's a climate-controlled, single entrance use that's proposed there. As we mentioned in the staff report, that's kind of an unusual use for this type of project, but it's located between some large buildings, the school building to the south has a large, I believe, gymnasium right up against this. So this would be just south of Mingus Avenue. This is the circulation plan that the, that the applicant put together. The orange would be the collector streets, Willard and Mingus. The local streets would be the yellow, and these would all be private streets with the possible exception of Candy Lane south of Mingus, that's currently on private land. We've got a stipulation that, that requires them to improve the west side of Candy Lane and work with, with Public Works on whether that's going to be a dedicated public right-of-way or whether it's going to continue to be a street with, with a public easement across it. On the, on the southwest portion of this, and probably shows up better on the previous slide, you see on the west edge of the southwest portion, there are some shapes there that are current single-family houses that get their access off of Candy Lane. They would need to get access through this property on that driveway that goes east-west from Candy Lane in order to access those, those properties, and that's in our, in our stipulations as well. On this plan also is the, the blue dots shows the pedestrian ways, and that highlighted yellow would be a pedestrian way that would go down and access a proposed trail along Blowout Creek that the city hopes to get a easement for fairly soon. This is a rendering that was provided by the applicant that shows the project at a little bit of an oblique angle with the surrounding properties. The main part of the project is highlighted in purple here, you can see the ravine to the north, or to the northwest. Verdi Heights subdivision is across the ravine, again, about three, or about 400, 500 feet away from the edge of the project. Old Town would be accessible just to, just off the picture here to the northeast, and the school district would, property is just to the east. Highland Square, again, an existing three-story apartment complex is existing on the southeast corner of Mingus and Candy Lane. Again, over towards the left edge of the picture, you can see the existing houses that would, would need to get access on the, on the private streets through this project. And that's the portion of the project that's, that's, that would be within the project, and you can see everything outside of that would be, would have to get access through the project. And you can also see just to the right of the Highland Square, that would be the storage building, the three-story storage building. This is shifting the same view, looking to the southeast. These are the boundaries of the property here. The path that I mentioned goes through the ravine, or will go through the ravine, and the, the applicant would, would build a connection down to that ravine so that there's direct access to Old Town. The other way to access Old Town is just to go out onto Willard Street. You can see on this, since we're looking kind of southeast, there's a very close proximity to the Verdi Valley Medical Center, a major employer. We anticipate there would be a lot of foot traffic between this area and the medical center, both on Willard Street and via Candy Lane. Also, this location is within easy walking distance of the, the school, as well as the, the rec center and the library complex here, along with the county building. So within half-mile walking distance of this project, there's a lot of major employers and major attractions for, for walking. This map shows the city's pedestrian and bike infrastructure as it exists right now. The pink lines are existing sidewalks to the north, where you see Pima Street, that's the Old Town area. This project is in the purple. The dotted line, the orange dotted line is the proposed path that would go from Old Town up to the existing Blowout Trail near the airport, and this project would connect into it, this project would connect into all of these pedestrian corridors in the center of the city. Applicant provided some elevations. This is the three-story apartment complex, this is what it would look like on all four sides, including the garage side. And here's a rendering of what it would look on, what looked like on the garage side. The here's an elevation of the townhomes in clusters of, I believe, three and four to a building. They would be two-story, and this is what the rendering looks like. Single-family, single-story, high ceilings, and this is what they would look like from the front. Again, this is what would be along the west edge of the property, nearest the single-family development across the ravine. Here's an elevation of the clubhouse building, this would be along the ravine as well. And a rendering of the building with a pool behind it, and this is what the view approximately would be from across the ravine with the, with the clubhouse building and the three-story apartments. Just off of this picture, both to the right and to the left would be where the single-family developments, or single-family units would be along the ravine. This is an elevation of the proposed storage structure, again, three stories, about 35 feet in height. And this would be the rendering, again, it wouldn't be a fenced facility, it would be all self-contained according to the master development plan. And the office building, medical office building on the southwest corner of Mingus and Candy Lane, two stories, about 25,000 square feet, a rendering from the parking lot. As we mentioned, this conforms with the general plan. There are some specific recommendations in the general plan for the Clemenceau area. They encourage and support a mixed-use development at this location. They, they encourage development to extend and enhance pedestrian connections to the surrounding areas, including safe connections to Old Town. And also encourages opportunities to use the Del Monte Gulch, Blowout Creek area for open space with access from adjacent developments. And again, that's, that's what's proposed here. Policies that are pertinent to this proposed PAD zoning, policies encourage mixed-use development and promoting walkable neighborhoods, supporting development that provides for a variety of residential types and styles. Again, we've got at least three different types of residential here, both the apartments, the townhomes, and the single-family. And also supporting mixed-use and residential, mixed-use residential within walking distance of Old Town. So this is, PADS, as I mentioned, are approved subject to master development plans, so it'd be subject to the master development plan that's being presented here and gets presented to the city council later on. In addition to that master development plan, we're proposing a number of stipulations. Number one, of course, is conformance with the master development plan itself, and that the, number two, shall be consistent with the code review comments. And also a note that because this is a very large and varied project, it'll be done in phases, as each development phase is proposed in detail, that would be subject to a new code review. So staff would review each new phase as it comes through for the details. This is kind of a big-picture, high, high-altitude view at the, at the PAD stage, but the details would be worked out at the code review stage. Also, requiring the building permit applications for at least the first phase should be submitted two years from time of approval, so it doesn't sit there indefinitely like some of our older PADS do. If it does sit there, then there'd be the opportunity to either extend the time limit or to revert the project to the, or revert the zoning to the original R1 zoning. Number four, this is where Public Works requires dedication of right-of-way and constructing pavement, curb, gutter, and sidewalk on the west side, the uncomplete side of Willard Street. And also, number five, constructing curb, gutter, and sidewalk on the west side of Candy Lane, and also work with Public Works to work out whether that's going to be a public street or a private street. And again, during the code review process for that particular phase, by that time, that can be worked out. Also, with each phase, future phase, we may require further traffic impact analysis if initial phases start creating a lot of traffic issues. Bicycle parking requirements, requirements that the front landscaping yards along the street be done with the first phase of each portion, even if the whole portion isn't being done, at least the landscaping along the street would be completed. Parking would have to be done in coordination, in accordance with Section 406 for each new phase. And in front of each garage, in front of the garage door, we require a minimum of 20 feet so that a car can park and not hang out in the street. We've had cases where garage doors are not that far back, and people try and park in front of them and hang out in the street. So we're requiring that when these phases get developed, that a minimum of 20 feet be set aside in front of the garage door in the driveway in tandem parking. Also, installation of, and assignment of addresses and private street names needs to go through the fire department, and since most of these would be private streets, the, they would be signed to differentiate them from public streets. Developer needs to dedicate easements guaranteeing vehicular pedestrian utility access to all those single-family residences that I was showing west of Candy Lane, there's five of those. Also, that the developer construct that off-site, off-site trail that goes down into the ravine to connect to the future, the future trail along Blowout Creek. That, and there is an existing trail easement on the very west edge of the property, on the north side of Mingus Avenue. We're stipulating that that be retained, and also that additional public pedestrian easements are recorded on this, public, on the private streets through the development so people can access the trails freely from the, from the major streets. Also, these are in several parcels, we would require those to be combined to eliminate internal parcel boundaries so that buildings don't get, build across parcel lines, that's a pretty standard requirement of us. Also, that the three-story heights for the multifamily and the storage buildings are permitted, but they are subject to fire department requirements in order to have the, the additional height. And the developer shall coordinate with transit to locate the transit stops, there are a couple of transit stops potentially along Willard Street and, and Mingus Avenue. And the developer shall enter an agreement to provide workforce housing prices, rents for no more, no fewer than 42 units, which is about 10%, which is what they had proposed. no more, no fewer than 42 units, which is about 10%, which is what they had proposed. So on to the tour of the property. This is at the very west edge of the property, looking east on Mingus. The main part of the property is in front of you, looking northeast. Moving a little bit farther east, still looking east, this would be at the intersection where what used to be called Choya Street would go north of the property. This is the view north on Old Choya Street through what used to be the Clemenceau development that was, that was smelter housing for the, for the UVX Mining Company. Some of that street grid would be replicated with this, with this project, and this would be one of those, using the existing, the existing intersections off of Mingus Avenue. This is looking the opposite direction, looking west, and you can see the three-story Highland Square Apartments already on the left and the other, in this project with the two and three story units would be on the right here. This is looking the opposite direction across the intersection at Choya and Mingus Avenue. The center of the picture would be where that storage facility would be located. Again, the three-story Highland Square Apartments is off the picture to the right, and you can see the school, private school building, gymnasium existing to the south. This is going a little farther east towards the roundabout at Willard Street. You can see the old school building across the street. This is looking north on Willard from the roundabout. You can see the west side of the property, west side of the street has not been finished with curb, gutter, and sidewalk. This would be an off-site requirement that would be required under the stipulations by the Public Works Department. This is looking the opposite direction, looking south from about that hospice driveway I was talking about. Again, the west side of the street, in this case, the right side of the picture, would be finished with curb, gutter, and sidewalk as part of the project. Turning a little bit to the right is the current intersection to the Willard Drive and Graham Street. You can see a couple of the houses there off to the right. This would be consolidated into a paved driveway that would serve those, those streets and would serve the north portion of the property. This is Candy Lane looking south from Mingus Avenue. This is about the location of where that medical office would be, just in the right of the picture, behind where that bush is. Again, the west side of Candy Lane is not finished. That would be required to be finished with curb, gutter, and sidewalk as part of this project as well. Going a little farther south on Candy Lane, this is looking down towards the medical offices, towards the south part of the property. About here on the right would be the location of some of the townhomes. And turning to the right here, looking into the property, you can see in the distance some of those five houses that would have to be accessed through easements through this property. And this is the view of those five houses looking south from Mingus Avenue. And townhouses would be in between the street and those houses. And finally, looking west on Mingus Avenue from the west lot line, you can see the commercial strip going towards 89A and towards the Maverick. Well, that concludes our presentation on it. The applicant is here to answer any particular questions and maybe give a little bit of additional information specific to the property, but here to answer any questions on the, on the zoning aspect of it.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions for staff?
Yes, please. The trail, the trail system you're talking about, Gary, that's going to be added to the project, what type of safety concerns would you have for that open trail development?
Safety concerns in terms of crime prevention?
Well, in terms of lighting, in terms of walkways and things of that nature.
Right now, we don't put, we don't require a lot of lighting on our natural trails through, through the area. That's something that could be added later on. We are anticipating that as trails get built and they get used, there's a lot of eyes on the street, eyes on the trail that kind of discourages criminal behavior. And so for the time being, we're not requiring a lot of infrastructure be put in in terms of lighting, surfacing, that sort of thing. There, most of our trails are, are fairly natural, and that would be the case here. Again, if, if in the future, people want to get more sophisticated with the trails, they could always do that, put in surfacing and lighting, but for right now, we're not requiring that.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Anything else?
Yes, I have a question, something about the streets being private. How would that be patrolled? Would that be patrolled by the local police or since they're private streets?
Private streets, as I understand it, would not be patrolled for speeding or anything like that. If somebody was in a high-speed pursuit and turned into one of those streets, the police department would follow them. But as far as patrolling speeds and that sort of thing on private streets, it's, that's not something that the police department does on private streets. We do anticipate, though, that because of the design, because of the narrowness of the streets, the on-street parking, the canopy of trees on the streets, that these would be naturally fairly slow in design as opposed to streets that have no friction on the, on the sides. So, and we do have public streets like this in other places in the, in the city and in apartment complexes.
Thank you. One more thing, I believe, I mean, it's a lot of documents here read somewhere where they're doing some sort of drainage catch for the stormwater to kind of self-irrigate?
Yes. Back on that, on the landscape plan that we blew up earlier in the presentation, there were dark green areas that were going to be detention areas. Probably the applicant can talk a little bit more in detail about those kinds of things, but that is one, one requirement that Public Works is going to have to retain water on the site or detain water on the site.
Anything, Commissioner Pelts?
No, I don't have anything at this time.
All right. Vice Chair?
So
I've got quite a few questions. One is
Gotta keep pushing it down, yeah.
So it's, now it's stuck, so.
Yes.
So I'm looking at the road and the, you called, you called Willard a collector. Is that what you called it?
Yes, I believe it's officially classified as a minor collector.
Even, even with this, this much housing being inserted onto it, it'll still be?
It would still be a minor collector unless, right now, it serves, it has about 2,800 cars a day, which is pretty small for a collector. Mingus Avenue is technically designated as a minor arterial because it connects 89A to 89A.
Right. I'm not, I'm not as worried about Mingus because of all the work that's been done to widen that, but, but Willard I am worried about. It's already narrow. And, and now you're adding a significant amount of traffic to it. The other problem is, is, you know, I'm not seeing anything in here about a traffic study. And you alluded to the possibility that at some point in the future, they may need to do one, but in my mind, we ought to be counting on it now, not 10 years from now, because they have a rather lengthy development process that they've, they've scheduled out. So I think by the time we have a problem, it's already way too late to deal with. And I'm really, I use that road almost daily. I'm really nervous about the impact that's going to happen to Willard and Main because that's already almost impossible to get out without being backed up all the way up to the old Catholic Church, waiting for a turn to get left on Main Street. So I, I'm not hearing anything about how any of that traffic's going to be dealt with, and I like that their roads are, are private because that's one less issue that we have to deal with. But now, all those houses, and, and I'm counting on about 1,000 trips, 400 units, 1,000 trips a day on those roads being added to the circulation, and that seems to be pushing us way above where we're already at, especially on Willard.
The Willard stipulation in, in the list of stipulations that we have, that requires Willard to be developed to a, I believe, a three-to-four lane or collector standard. So that would introduce not only the completion of the curb, gutter sidewalk on the west side, but widening it out so there's a left turn lane in the middle, which would help with some stacking and the turning, turn motions in and out. The applicant might be able to talk about the, the traffic study that's been done already. The conclusion of that traffic study is that, yes, it would have impacts, but there are already impact there, you know, from baseline growth without this project, there would be impacts on certain, certain intersections. That's one reason we, we want them to, we want to be able to at some point come back and make sure that there are traffic studies done to mitigate in advance of, of future, future phases of this. Is there another part of that question? I forget.
Well, I'll move on. You're talking about that this will all be built, but I didn't see anywhere in the plans of the phasing of the construction of the off-site amenities.
Pha, construction of the off-site amenities would be done with each, each individual phase. As I mentioned, we'll have, will require a new code review process that goes through staff and gives a list of requirements for the construction of this particular phase as it goes forward in more detail than the code review process for this. So that would be done in conjunction with, with each phase.
And I'll have to go back and look. I don't remember seeing a phasing map.
There's a description, there's not a phasing map. There's a description of the phasing at, I believe, the end of the letter of intent, which is shortly after our staff report in the, in the packet.
So could you, could you point out the phasing for us?
I don't, well, let's see. I do have it right here. And again, the applicant might be able to go into more detail on this, but vesting, plating, and permitting would be completed by July 23. Infrastructure commence July 2023, which I assume would be some of those onsite as well as off-site improvements, but again, the applicant would want to address that one. Community facilities commence March 2024. Multifamily and medical, south of Mingus Avenue, so south and west of Candy Lane, commencing May 24. Single-family residential commence July 24. Multifamily residential north of Mingus commence July 24. Apartments commence August 24. Storage facility, July 24, and anticipating complete build-out, 26.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions, but I would love to speak with the applicant. Please introduce yourself for the record.
I'll do that. Good evening, commission and staff. My name is Jesse Dowling, longtime, lifelong resident of the Verde Valley. I was on the commission for a while, on the council for a while. Now I'm on the other side of the microphone. Oh, boy. Good evening to you all. You know, we're trying to bring a nice little project in here to address some of the ongoing needs that we've all seen happening. You know, my own personal story interjects a little bit that I actually had to step off of council because I couldn't find a place to afford to live in Cottonwood, and it took me three years to get back. Just recently, my oldest child actually had to, ended up moving to Flagstaff because there was no availability here. So she doubled her rent and moved to Flagstaff, and that was easier than finding a house here. So I think it's something that we're all aware of and we all know is an issue that needs to be addressed. And so we're, you know, this is what we're bringing forward to attempt to address that. This has sort of been an ongoing, in the back of my mind, I've been trying to figure out how to solve this problem for many, 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 many years. And it's going to take, you know, I've always noticed it was going to take a, a group effort. And so somebody came in and has an option to look at here, so that's what we're here to present to you this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions. We have Mr. Doug Stroh, the architect, here with his assistant. Richard Whitney is here. He's the man behind that. And this is my employer here, Tom Pender, who's the engineer on the project. So fire at me if you've got any questions. I'm happy to answer them.
Commissioners, fire at will.
Again, my question is regarded to the wastewater collection, how that would work, what it would look like. Is it going to be underground?
Sure.
Like an aquifer?
Sure. Yeah, so we're actually going to be working with the Friends of the Verde River on this one and going through their new review process that they've got where they suggest best practices. And what we're going to do is we're going to have multiple smaller basins spread around the site. They are going to utilize what we call a subsurface retention, where we have a, you know, some sort of a structure underneath there that will allow more rapid filling of water, and it doesn't stay on the surface as it, as it absorbs back into the ground. And so, and by state law and statute, we have to make sure that we do not increase flow off of the site at all. And if anything, we try and reduce it normally and try and mitigate and manage that through the use of these basins. There is an existing structure at the northeast corner. There's a fairly good-sized basin up there that we're going to be integrating in from that, but we do have some other flows that we'll be sending into the wash and just sort of trying to spread everything out so that we don't overwhelm any one area. But we'll also, you know, per the standards for those basins, we can't just dig a huge ditch, so they will be of a certain depth, not to exceed with nice side slopes. They will be landscaped in some fashion and, or, you know, or lined with rock, depending on how it's going to work out. We have nice green ones on here, so landscape would be nice. And then we'll, like I said, we'll have the structures underneath there to accommodate the excess storage.
Further questions?
Yes, thank you. What type of green energy components have you thought about for the project?
At this point, I don't know that we've looked vastly far into the future. I understand we may actually consider looking at something, once we get through this process, which is intensive enough to try and get approved. I do believe we may look at some implementation of possible rooftop solar throughout the site, because that's just, we got plenty of sun. You're welcome.
Commissioner Kling, do you have any questions?
I don't, not at this time. Thank you.
I didn't forget about you. Commissioner Pelts?
Sure.
Vice Chair?
All right. Well, if you need anything else, let me know.
All right. Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, we do have our engineer here to speak on any of the traffic or circulation issues, if you'd like to hear from him.
That would probably be worth doing. Thank you very much. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening. I'm James Bramble, senior engineer for the city. Fairly familiar with the project and happy to answer any questions you have regarding the traffic or anything else.
Do you have any concerns about adding new traffic from the housing that this planned area development is adding into that area on Mingus?
Certainly, yeah. You know, there's no doubt there's, there's impacts. The traffic study that has been prepared has showed that there is some impacts. We typically look at the peak hour of traffic. There is background traffic over the lifespan of this project development. Traffic naturally increases anyways on the road, and that's what's been shown to be a major contributor to failures of operations at some of the intersections in this proximity. We have left these comments open, as Gary mentioned. We still are waiting for input from ADOT because it does impact several of their traffic signals. for input from ADOT because it does impact several of their traffic signals. And also, we want to see, you know, we're looking at a four-year project development span here, and we know that that can change. So we want to leave that door open to really evaluate those impacts as they come up as this is phased, and we can address them at this time. Unfortunately, the intersections in the city that are impacted are small intersections, the intersection of Willard and Main Street, and the intersection at Sixth Street and Mingus, where even if there are impacts, there's really not a lot of good options to mitigate them. So we have to be comfortable with some of that or get creative. And that, we're trying to leave that door open to work through those issues.
Is there any plan to add additional crosswalks along any of these ways, since we're talking about adding more walking, more walkability?
Specifically, we kind of assume that there would be one, probably crossing to the school. We would prefer to keep them at intersections, you know, where you have either roundabout control or stop control. But I think that's something that we can consider throughout this.
What's your future plans for Main and Willard? Because I know with the developments that have come through, there's going to be a huge bottleneck down in that area, where it's going to cause severe problems for traffic. And especially with a unit this size, bringing it through, you're expanding that road, but you're not talking, or nor have I heard anything about development for Main going through there. And without really doing some severe changes down there, how would you control that? I mean, there's been talks of stop signs, there've been talks of circle drives, but I know that there's a development that's going in phase down there that has come across our commission. And with that one and this one, it'll be almost impossible to go down to Old Town, that I can see. I mean, I can see that being a severe issue.
Certainly. And the traffic study has shown some of that with certainly that intersection, the left turn movement in particularly going into Old Town from Willard. It does cause some delays, more so with the mainline traffic on Main Street. You're going to be sitting there waiting to make a left going during those peak hours, you know. And is it going to Old Town? The argument can be made that probably not, at least during those peak hours.
Okay, thank you.
One just sucks. So has there been consideration of making the roads that feed on to Willard entrance only and remove that traffic from Willard, so there is no chance that you can turn right out of this subdivision and or the bottleneck? You know, I keep hearing that you understand we're going to have traffic problems, but I'm not hearing anything about how we're going to address the traffic problems. And it seems like before we add to our traffic problems, we should in some manner have some idea of how we're going to deal with it when it happens, instead of waiting for it to happen, when we know it's coming.
Hundred percent agree. So we have not looked at making any of those like a right-in, right-out turning movement. You would then send that traffic really to the roundabout to do a U-turn if it wanted to go the other way, and you're really not losing that traffic. When they put in a two-way left turn lane down Willard, you eliminate the delays caused by waiting for someone to make a left turn into the development.
I think we're all collecting our thoughts. Yes?
Madam Chair, while we're collecting, just want to point out that if this development would be in a different location on the edge of town, you would assume that 100% of all the units, the residents of the units, would be getting in their car and going somewhere. As I pointed out, this is within walking distance of a lot of major destinations, employment, schools, recreation, transit, shopping. We don't anticipate that 100% will be walking to these, but we do hope that people who would be in this location would appreciate that amenity, that ability, and would take advantage of it to a great extent. And as James said, a lot of, even the peak hour traffic, if they have to drive somewhere, there aren't that many destinations to the north in Old Town. We, I think, would anticipate that most of the traffic would be going down Mingus or south to 89A to access points farther away. But hopefully, the walkability of this project would, to a great extent, mitigate some of that traffic issue.
Thank you very much. I tend to agree. Also, thank you very much, unless you have something more to add. I think that the way that this project is being explained with the walkability, it can be hard to imagine because there are many areas of Cottonwood currently that are not especially walkable. And so we tend to think first and foremost about where are people going to be driving? Where are they going to be parking? Whereas when I look at this and I think about its connection to the Old Town area, and I am talking a little bit out of turn here, but I'm going to finish, I think that it really gives us an opportunity to get traffic in Old Town without needing to increase parking, which is a difficult conversation to have every time we have it. So, thank you very much. Is there anything you'd like to add about the traffic?
No, unless there's any further questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Commission, I'd like to also mention that Grosseto Ranch Road is in the pipeline, and it is in the pipeline, meaning we will probably issue permits for it this week. That is another factor to kind of get traffic around on the north side of Old Town. Yeah, it might be the long way to go, but it will let traffic flow. So that is something to consider as well.
And as we continue to develop, it might go that way, too. All right. I believe that we have asked the applicant and the staff all of our questions for this time. Is there anyone from the public who is here who would like to speak about this project? We can grant you each three minutes. If you have your hand up, please come forward to the mic and introduce yourself for the record.
My name is Ruth Ann Joy, and I've lived in Cottonwood, Arizona since the 70s. And I now have grown children and grandchildren in the area. I see the housing situation in this area literally as a crisis. And that was before I started working for the domestic violence shelter in town. We are regularly turning homeless individuals away because we're a DV shelter, and we're at capacity. When people's time is up, it is very, very common for us to send people even that are working full-time jobs to Flagstaff or another location because they cannot find a home or even an apartment here. I am, I think it is vitally important that we look at as many possibilities as we can of getting affordable housing in here and including market rate housing, because that's also going to help. I think the walkability is a wonderful function of this location, and from my point of view, I really hope that it's able to go through. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak for or against this project? Please come forward and introduce yourself.
Hello, my name is Suzanne Marcinco, and my husband and I moved here approximately two years ago. And my big thing about this, this housing sounds all wonderful, just like, you know, whatever. But the problem is to have people to be able to afford this kind of housing, these townhouses and everything else, you have to have jobs. This city has no jobs unless you work in the medical profession, Walmart, or Fry's. There are no jobs. So where do you think people are going to work and be able to afford these new developments?
I can only speak for myself personally, but I do know a number of local managers and business owners who have a very difficult time hiring and have for the past few years. And so I feel like it's become almost a circular thing, sort of a chicken or the egg argument, where there are no jobs because there are no people to work the jobs, so there are no jobs. Ultimately, what we can do from a planning and zoning perspective is provide opportunity for growth that will fulfill some of our housing needs so that housing is available for those who want it. And then hopefully, that will help in other areas naturally. So there will be natural forms of growth in jobs, although I will say, my personal observation is that it's very difficult to hire.
Yes, it is very difficult, especially when you're making $12.15 to afford this kind of housing. 10% will go to affordable housing. I know people that are working two jobs at minimum wage just to try to make their rent now here. And then you're going to propose all this other thing besides the traffic, and thank you, gentlemen, for mentioning that, because the hospital is on Willard. You start getting all this congestion, then you've got issues, too. But I'm saying, we've got to address this employment thing. I see more and more homeless people all the time on corners, you know. So, you know, you've got to provide jobs, too. That's just it. We keep asking for retail, retail, more jobs. Nobody wants to, nobody wants to build here because it's, you know, it's expensive, land's expensive, the rates. So that's another thing.
Are we allowed to interact? Okay, I'd like to answer some of your questions, if I could. And I appreciate that you stood up. I appreciate that you're part of our community and you're concerned enough to be here tonight and get up and speak on these issues. And we are, we are in a crisis right now. And you asked, where's the jobs? Well, I can tell you, where aren't the houses? So right now, according to the latest housing study that was done for the Verde Valley, we're already 2,200 to 2,400 houses behind the market. There's already that many houses needed just to deal with the people here today. And by 2030, that number's expected to hit 3,600 houses that our community doesn't have. So here we have an opportunity, and we've been looking at opportunities for the entire time I've been serving on this board, which is about two years now, of ways to bring more housing in. Unfortunately, the bulk of it is single or multifamily housing. It's this type of congested use instead of single-family housing, which is what I would prefer to see in our community. But we don't have the available land. We don't have the available way to build that. We don't have the infrastructure available to do that. So you have to look at what you have available, how to use it the most efficiently and effectively you can, and provide as many houses as we can for the people who are currently here. I have a lot of friends who have businesses, have restaurants. They can't open seven days a week because they don't have staff. They can't run their businesses efficiently because they don't have staff, because nobody can live here. If you go out to the 525, there's people living in the forest because they don't have a place to live. We have a housing need. We don't have to add more jobs to our area. We just have to figure out how to take care of the people that are already here trying to make a living, and this is one of those options to do that.
Okay. I appreciate being able to speak my mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who'd like to speak on this project? There's one behind you. Yes, no, no, you come forward. Sorry. I was responding to another hand.
Madam Chair, we will need all of them to fill out the speaking form.
Okay, happy to do that. Peg Eaton, resident of Cottonwood, excuse me. My folks have been here for probably 40 years. And one of the things, you've done a great job on the whole traffic plan flow, all that, but I didn't see anything about EPA or water. As we know, Arizona, the whole west is in a water crisis. Are those materials available for me to review? Do you have plans? I mean, how does this impact the water that you're, where is it coming from? I assume out of the Verde and wastewater treatment plant. Are you having to expand that? Or are there answers to any of those questions in the plan?
Madam Chair, my understanding is that there is capacity for, in the wastewater treatment plant up Mingus Avenue. Our water is almost entirely, I believe entirely from wells. And I don't have statistics on that. I don't believe there's an issue with that for a project like this.
For over 400 units, you're telling me that zoning and planning doesn't have a water requirement in the planning process for this?
Madam Chair, Commission, I would like to remind you all that before this project or any project gets this far, it is reviewed by every department in the city, including utilities. They do look at the water. They do look at the wastewater. They provide comments on what's required to connect to our services. If they had issues, it would have been indicated, it would have been stipulated in the proposed stipulations. They're also included in the code review comments. Unless we hear from that department that there are issues, we don't move forward thinking that there are.
Okay. So that answered my question. Thank you for addressing the chair on that. My guess, one more question is whether or not that information's available for the public to review.
Ma'am, you can submit a public records request for the entirety of this project, and it'll have every comment back to the code review, and you'll get those utility comments on that.
Great, thanks so much.
If you do have specific questions, you could come into our utility department and speak with those folks as well.
Good. Thanks again for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And I did see some other hands. If you would still like to come up, you may. Yes?
I would like to add something really quick. They are doing something at that development about collecting water to use as, to irrigate the property. So there is a plan to capture water, so.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, my name is Gary Pride, and I'm a property owner on North Willard Drive. My questions are mainly in regards to the walkability from this project down to Old Main. You had mentioned that Willard Street may be widened to three or four lanes. Is that going to be all the way down to Main Street? And how would that be accomplished, given just the actual topography of that area? And will the sidewalks be sent down on the west side of Willard Street all the way down to Old Main, or will it terminate where the access is given to my property on Willard Drive?
I believe this is more of a question for staff.
Sure. Madam Chairman, my understanding, and James can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the off-site improvements would only be adjacent to this property. So the sidewalks would be on the west side of the street, but they would end at the property, which would be the, which would be the north driveway, which would be the
Where the access to our property is.
Joint access to your street, yes.
Okay, so there would not, it would not continue.
It wouldn't keep going north, no.
And then the other question I had, the Blowout Creek Trail. I know it's not there yet. By the drawings, it looks like the access will be given and going down to the bottom of the ravine. Or will there be a trail set higher than the bottom of the ravine traveling to Old Main?
Madam Chair, the trail itself would start around the end of the Balboa Street area and essentially follow the wash, would cross the wash and go on the east side of the wash at the bottom of the ravine.
It'd be at the bottom, okay.
And this project would put a trail, kind of skirting the side of the hill down to meet that trail, to connect this project with that trail down there. And that would take place in about the middle of the project where we saw the clubhouse.
Okay. But it's going down to the ravine?
Yes.
Okay, to the bottom, okay. And then where we are accessed on Willard Drive, it's currently a right-of-way. And then where we are accessed on Willard Drive, it's currently a right-of-way. Is there planned walkability to be done there where my property is adjacent to that right-of-way that runs north-south on the Willard Drive location?
Not as part of this project, Madam Chairman. The improvements on that part of the street would be happening with development on that, on that stretch of Willard Drive, north of this. That would not include any, any improvements as part of this project. This project is just offsite, but adjacent offsite on Willard Street, on Candy Lane, in those streets.
So there's no planned development to go straight over the hill to Old Main?
To the north and up over the, down the hill there? No, not as part of this project. It could happen in the future, but not with this project.
But not with this project. Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I don't believe I see any further speaker. Oh, all right, sir. Please come forward, fill out the form if you haven't yet, and introduce yourself for the record.
My name's Al Bradshaw, 1530 West Wagon Wheel Road. My wife and I, we've lived here for seven years, but this is the first time I've taken the opportunity to speak before one of the governmental groups. I think this project and the components of it are excellent for an area like this, and I hope everybody works together to make it as good as it possibly can be for the community. But I would like to make three or four comments and ask questions. I hope that a lot more attention is given to what Mr. Garrison brought up, and that is about the traffic primarily on Willard, but even on Mingus and any place else around here. But having this much traffic coming in and out directly onto Willard and Mingus as they exist today, that can be a problem. Also, when you look at a big project like this, instead of looking at them one at a time, you should look at them in conjunction with other big projects. And when you look at the large apartment complex across the street from the hospital, you have to realize that coming down Willard Street is going to be their access to Old Town, the schools, riverfront park, and so forth. And that's going to add more to the traffic concerns that have been brought up tonight about this project. So Mr. Davis talked about a traffic study coming, maybe in later phases of this project, but I would suggest it be done sooner rather than later. One other thing, this is a big project, there's going to be 30 acres of landscaping, and I wonder if there will be reclaimed water available coming down Mingus Avenue to feed this project. The reclamation line, I think, does come down Mingus. One other thing, something this big and this important in this location ought to be as attractive of a contribution as it can be to the community. Once they build it, that's going to be it. The renderings that we were shown are very basic architectural renderings. So I wonder if, as this goes along, is this going to be the final design of what these buildings are going to look like? Right across the street from it is a historic Clemenceau Museum with very nice architectural features, and things like that, I think, should be paid attention to. Lastly, why is the three-story storage facility included in this project? There doesn't seem to be anything in common with the rest of the components. And the only compatibility, and anything in common that it has, is that it happens to be next to an existing three-story building, but the use is totally different. The other three-story building is a residential senior care place, and this is going to be a storage building, so maybe the developer somewhere along the line could answer something about that. And thank you for, Jesse Dalling, for representing the development, but maybe we could learn more about who the developer is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to quickly invite the applicant up if they want to answer anything that was just asked, because it's not really the commission's place to answer some of those development And while I appreciate you doing this very much, if you could go as quickly as possible.
Certainly, certainly, I understand. Yeah, I will be introducing the owner of the development soon. I do want to reach out, though, for those that are concerned about water, I am as well. I, you know, I have the background here as well. So I do know that back in my time on city council, there were some things that had come through where when the city did buy the water, the water, different water districts, and put those in place, and start the repair against leaks, I remember a round number back then was that we were actually pumping 30% less groundwater, yet serving 30% more population. So I think that is a process that is underway, and that is addressed in the city's general plan. I did go through and make sure. And we are actually the next to the lowest water use city in the Verde Valley, northern, you know, much of the northern Arizona area. That being said, I'd like to introduce Mr. Richard Whitney.
Please introduce yourself for the record.
Hi, excuse me, I am Richard Whitney. I am one of the partners in this development. I live locally, I live in Sedona, Arizona. We have done a project here in Cottonwood recently where we worked with the city and were able to get you a new city hall, which will, you know, hopefully be open soon, worked with Ron on that. So any questions you may have for me, I'm here.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Correct answer.
Okay, and sir, yeah.
Incorrect answer.
I am here for any questions you may have.
Madam Chair, he needs you to address the commission.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just talking to this gentleman, he said he wanted to meet the developer, so I just wanted to know, I am here for any questions that anybody, that anybody may have.
Thank you very much. I don't believe, oh, I'm sorry. Vice Chair Garrison does have a question.
Yeah, and so I'll ask you directly what Mr. Bradshaw asked around about, what's, why are the buildings so, and this is a personal observation, lackluster? Why, and the storage building, I get why you chose to put one there. I won't say it's the highest and best use for Mingus Avenue frontage. In my mind, that's, that's high-value property. And then the design of it is so exaggerated that it, that it stands out, it doesn't even blend with, with the buildings that are existing in that area. As much do the apartment complexes across the street. I'm really kind of, I was taken back with, you know, the scale of project is amazing, and, and we're supportive of housing.
Sure.
But it seems like the design has a lot to be desired. It just is, it, I don't want to say it reminds me of ghettos, but it's pretty stinking close. It's, it's boxes, there's, there's almost no architectural deviation on these buildings whatsoever. I'm answering, I'm asking a question. So why did you choose to take such a basic design on the structures when you're right in the center of town, you're right in the heart of a high-visibility area, and you're up against what are some of the historical buildings in our community, yet what you're building doesn't represent any of that?
Well, we actually think that we liked the design. We worked with architects on coming up with what we thought would be a great design for this community. We wanted to do something more contemporary. We wanted to do something with flat roofs in case there was something in the future that could be done to help with maybe green energy. If you, if you use peaks, then it makes it a lot more difficult to do that. So that is something that we are possibly thinking about in the future when we start to build this project, is having solar and making this a green project.
And I get that, and I appreciate that you're thinking ahead. I guess, more specifically, if you look at the three-story low-income housing unit right there next to the proposed storage facility, that has a lot of architectural features built into it. If you look at the Inspiration Project across from the hospital that was mentioned earlier, that is really plain, but it also has a lot of architectural features that break up these big, huge slabs of, of solid wall. And it just seems like more could be done to try to make this. When, when we saw the elevation of the property from across the wash, looking at it from the Verde Heights area, you couldn't see the buildings because all we could see was trees. It's going to take a heck of a long time for the trees in that area to get anywhere near big enough to hide these things. And yet, we're going to have to look at all these big square boxes in the meantime, and it just seems like there's more that could be done to make them visually appealing to the public as well as your renters.
Well, again, we feel that, we feel the design is, is very, would be very nice to look at from across the wash, or from, or driving by. As far as the self-storage unit, we wanted to make that look like, stay in the same form as the office building that we are proposing. We want it to look like an office building. We did not want it to look like, you know, temperature-controlled self-storage, which we feel would be a great benefit to the, to this area of the city, for our renters, as far as, as also with neighbors. The hospital called, and they said that they did like the idea of having it there.
Thank you very much. I would like to remind the public and the commission that this is a zone change review and not a design review.
Madam Chair, the design review is incorporated with the master development plan?
Thank you. I'm spicy now.
Madam Chair, I would also say that if they came in with a design that's significantly different from what's being proposed here, then we would bring it back, we would, we would say, you need to go back to the planning commission for a design review. But generally, the design you're looking at is, is what would be going forward in some form. Doesn't have to be exactly identical to this, but if it's consistent with this as we move forward, then it wouldn't need a design review.
And the, our color schemes, our, our planning schemes, our trees that we're going to be putting in there, we do not, we feel this is going to enhance this community and be a, and not be, as you mentioned, toward ghetto, which site, it would not look like that. We feel it's going to be a benefit to this community and this, and it's going to be a community within the community, is what our goal is, to make it walkable, to make it so you ride, you know, you can ride bikes to and from where you're going, you know, you're going to. You can walk into Old Town, you can walk to work. And we actually think the design, when it's done, when, when it's built, everybody would be very happy with the, with the, with the design of this project.
And, and Madam Chair, I, my, my use of vocabulary was a little harsh, and I, and I take that back. But what I was alluding to is when, when those projects were built in, in our inner cities and our other areas, they were done with a need to maximize value and maximize space over, over architecture. And, and in this case, to the chairwoman's comment, we only get one bite at this apple. You're asking for a very large PAD. We get one shot at this, and we have to make sure that, that at the end of the day, the totality of what you're trying to do is going to be okay for our community, because you're not just building two units, you're not just building three units, you're building a massive amount of space. And we don't get you to come back again unless you make a significant change, and your design is in and your design is done. I was just asking why there wasn't maybe more thought put into making the structures less boxy and more appealing to the eye, which, which means crevices and cracks and things that pop out and shapes, right? And so it breaks up that space, that, that elevation until we get to a point where the trees actually take over and do some of that work for you and break up those hard structures. So that, that was my point. I didn't mean to say you're building a low volume or a low, a low type of a project, but I think we could do better, is all I was after.
And I respect that, and I can say is this, that we are also staying within the community, we are designing our fences to work within what cotton, what we have seen in cotton as far as fencing has been built in Old Town and, and all the structures with the, with the, with the nice stone and everything. We are staying within, you know, with that, so that cotton, so that we will stay within Cottonwood's design.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions?
No. And with that, and with that, I'm going to close the floor to the public and allow the commissioners to speak, and also Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had one response to the question about the reclaimed water. I spoke with utilities staff this morning about that, because I had seen a possible receptacle for reclaimed water out there, and they said that had been a part of the plan originally, but that is not going to happen at this point. So the answer is no, that there will not be a source of reclaimed water going across the front of the property on Mingus Avenue.
Madam Chair, I want to clarify something, too. It's been brought up a few times. There has been a traffic impact study done. The city, as you'll see in stipulation six, if a motion is made on this project tonight, that we may require further traffic analysis in future phases, but there has been one done already.
Thank you very much. And now each commissioner, if you could share your thoughts on this project. Start with Bob.
Thank you. Good information being, my thumb is malfunctioning as well. A lot of good information being shared. I like the idea of the housing component versus jobs. I think the chicken and the egg component makes a lot of sense, but in this case, I think you've got to have the, the structures, the facilities available before you get the, the workers to come out. Unlike my colleague, I kind of like the elevations of the project. I like the color schemes that you've chosen. I think they make a lot of sense. I also like the idea of me having to push this harder, but those flat rooftops make a lot of sense for, like you say, future expansion. You can do photovoltaic, you can do other things up there. And they also are parapitted, so then you hide all those elements as well, so you don't see it from the public right away, which I think makes a lot of sense. So I think it's a good project, and I'm looking forward to working through it to see it come to fruition.
Commissioner Glasgow?
Yeah, I'm happy to see that we have some growth going here. And in regards to it being more multifamily or apartment types, I think that will help with the job situation. Hopefully as, because apartments can be more affordable than homes, and there's a lot of jobs out there, but they're not jobs that can afford a home. So if we can get younger people in here to take those jobs and fill these homes, I think it's a good plan.
Commissioner Paltz?
I want to thank the public for showing up and giving their input. It was very interesting to hear from the public. We don't always get that chance. I think the projects are very good project. I think it's needed for that area. It is an area that's just kind of sitting there being nothing done to it. It's just kind of a little eyesore. I do know that there is a well site that's on that site, but I don't know if it's being used. I know that it's there. I think it'll be a great housing development in the area. I think it'll be good for the community. I know that, I hear a lot of people saying that, and I'm talking from people at the grocery store, to barbers, to people that I work with, just people I meet generally, just say, I have to find someplace else to move because I can't find housing. have to find someplace else to move because I can't find housing." And it's not even an issue of the cost, it's, "I can't find housing," and they hate to leave. I have a friend that's moving his whole family out of the high school because of it. So I think it's a great idea. I think it's a great project. I think the color schemes and the design, every place always kind of looks different when you start changing it from the Santa Fe to the new design, and I think it's going to be a good project. I'd like to see it go through.
Commissioner Kling?
Hi, thank you very much. I'd just like to thank the public for your turn out today. I mean, it's great to hear from you, and sorry not to see you in person, but I think all of your comments are relevant. Probably agreed, water, progress, or expansion, all of that is very relevant, so I really appreciate it. You want to do a huge progress? I think you're a little bit on the main street progress. There's a little partiality, Chris, who's in there? There are some partialities here, but overall, I think this is a great insight topic. As well, I agree with the public that there is a huge discrepancy between pay and affordability with housing. I think we can do just sort of that along. Point this from the work to the road traffic, or just affordability. I think there are a lot, you know, that can be done on this to improve it visually and definitely, you know, would that be? I don't, I don't think that's a good point. Do you have any comments?
Attention all guests, the R C would be closing in 30 minutes. Attention all guests, the R C will be closing in 30 minutes. Thank you.
Please continue.
By the way, yeah, I hope the right part of the government is, if you...
Thank you, Commissioner Kling. Vice Chair Garrison?
Yeah, so I've spoken a lot already, so I'll try to keep it brief if possible. The, I think, overall, this is a great use of space. It's an infill project, which was the first time I got to hear that tonight. I think this is a great infill project. I think it's needed. To that point, we, as I said earlier, we have recommended to council or we have approved numerous multifamily projects throughout this town, specifically because of the reasons we're looking at moving this one forward so expeditiously, is we need housing. We needed it yesterday, and this is going to go a long ways to helping us cure some of the ills we have when it comes to finding people a place to put their head at night. The problem I've got with it is, like I said, we get one bite at this, and this is a huge piece of land. It's a lot of development, all happening at one time. If we don't like it when it's halfway through, we don't really have any choice, because it's going to get built consistently all the way through. So I want to make sure whatever we do now really reflects what is going to be the best for the community moving forward. And so we're answering the portion of building houses for people to live in. The problem I have is I have to start thinking of when I pick and choose what I'm going to support and not support in these projects as they move forward, because we've done so many that I think it's probably time to start getting a little more selective and a little more stingy about how quickly we adopt somebody else's plan or vision for these areas. And being right across the street from the school, I would prefer to see single-family housing on that property. That's, when I grew up taking that school, going in that school, there was, and Mr. Pender was right there with me, we were wandering through those neighborhoods. We knew the children that lived in those houses, and there will be no children living in these apartments with no yard. Well, very few, let's put it that way. There's not, this is not a child-friendly development. So we're losing our single-family housing in this community, and I think we need to protect what we can, because the American dream is to own a house. It isn't to live in an apartment. And what we're doing and what we've been pushing is all apartment, and even your single family is not really conducive to families. Will they use them? I'm sure they will, because there's very little other opportunities for them out there. But I just would, I think we can do better. Like I said, I think this is a great project. I support most of it. I just think, as a community, we can do better, and I think this could have been planned a little more open, a little more in line with the needs of a healthy community instead of a needy community. And so those are my comments. But thank you for coming to our community. Thank you for putting this size of an investment in and doing what you can to help us with our workforce housing issue.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, Commissioners. So I could probably be considered the diametrically opposed vote to the Vice Chair's sentiments across the board. I like the design. I like a more contemporary look. However, I accept that design is subjective, and something that goes very strong one way is probably not going to please people who prefer the other way. So for those of you out there that are not finding a more contemporary visual approach appealing, I understand. You prefer a more traditional approach. You're never going to make someone, or you're never going to make everyone happy with the design, because design is subjective, and appreciation of design is subjective. As to the comments about family and family housing, I think that the belief that families have to live in single-family homes with yards is antiquated. I think that it is unrealistic for this community. And speaking to some of the comments that we received earlier from the public about affordability, I think that a lot of families, they need a more affordable option, and these include families with children. And I want to support those families. My perspective as the Chair of this committee is that I want to provide housing for families, and I think that the vast majority of single-family homes that we have in this city are actually not currently housing families with children. I think they're housing relatively wealthy retirees. And the people who I want to see served by the housing that we're building are people that are younger, are people that have children, and are people who have been priced out of our market. So that is my personal goal as we move projects forward. That said, in general, I do agree with the Vice Chair's sentiment, that we need to be careful, as a community, what we pass through. Now, I might disagree with him about this one project, but I do think that we have pushed a lot of housing through lately, and as much as I am extremely in favor of this particular project, I do think that, as a commission, it would be wise to heed his words and to consider the fact that we are building quite a bit to balance our housing needs, and we need to be very careful about what we choose to build. And I really appreciate that our commission is varied on this, because varied voices get better outcomes. So I want to, and in that sentiment also, I would like to thank the public as well. I know you are on a high of getting lots of thanks, but we really don't have a turnout like this very often, and even though it makes the meetings longer, and that's not my personal favorite, I do appreciate being able to hear everyone's opinion, because honestly, we're here to serve you. We are volunteers from the community. We are literally your neighbors, and we are here to help shape the community move forward. Do any of the Commissioners have any final words that they would like to add before we take it to a vote? Vice Chair, are you comfortable making a motion?
Yes, ma'am. I just got to find it.
Oh, it's a long document.
Yeah.
Mr. Vice Chair, if you have a PDF up, it's page 14 of the PDF. It's just below the minutes from the last meeting. It's the first item on that.
Saved a lot of trees switching the iPads.
Yeah, this doesn't work for everything, does it? For Z 22-006, to change the zoning classification from R1 Single Family Residential to PAD, planned area, the following stipulations. One, development shall be in substantial conformance with the master development plan dated October 5, 2022, and reviewed by the commission on October 17, 2022. Care with me, because there's two pages of this stuff. The development shall be consistent with code review documents, comments dated May 3, 2022, where applicable and not superseded by the master development plan, and with the April 19, 2022 letter from the City of Cottonwood Airport Manager. In addition, each development phase shall be subject to new code review to ensure compliance with the master development plan and all applicable codes. Number three, building permit applications for at least the first phase of building shall be submitted to the city no later than 24 months from the date of zone change ordinance adoption. If this stipulation is not met, the city may take action to revert the site to its previous R1 zoning and/or extend the time by which building permit applications must be submitted. If building design differs significantly from those shown in the master development plan, additional design review approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be required. Number four, developer shall dedicate right away and construct pavement, curb, and gutter on Willard Street per City of Cottonwood standard, detail number 1603, three to four lane collector. Number four. Number five, developer, I can get it.
Developer shall construct pavement, curb, and gutter on Candy Lane per City of Cottonwood standard, detail number 1602, two-lane collector. Development shall dedicate right of way, developers shall dedicate right of way or public easement for Candy Lane per requirements of City of Cottonwood Public Works prior to application for building permits in the portion of the site west of Candy Lane and south of Mingus Avenue. Number six, the city may require further traffic impact analysis for later development phases and contributions to off-site improvements may be required by the city or ADOT to mitigate traffic impacts resulting from the development. Number seven, bicycle parking shall be shown on building permit site plans and installed per zoning ordinance section 406H prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Number eight, front landscaping yards per zoning ordinance section 407 shall be included in building permit plans for the first phase in each portion of the site and shall be installed prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy for that phase. Number nine, parking shall be provided in compliance with zoning ordinance section 406. Number 10, entry parking areas in front of garage doors shall be a minimum of 20 feet in length to ensure parked vehicles are not blocking through streets and driveways. Number 11, assignment and installation of addresses and private street names shall be approved by the fire department prior to the application for building permits. Street name signs for private streets shall be in white or otherwise differentiated from public street name signs and shall include the words "private street." Number 12, developer shall dedicate easement guaranteeing vehicular, pedestrian, and utility access from public rights of way to all adjacent single-family residences west of Candy Lane prior to issuance of building permits for any structure in the portion of the site west of Candy Lane and south of Mingus Avenue. Almost there, promise. Thirteen, developer shall construct off-site trail connecting to clubhouse area with the blowout trail within a trail easement agreed to by the city, the developer, and the land owner. Trails shall be natural dirt surface, no less than four feet in width. Number 14, the existing trail easement on APN 406-32-022N and 022U at the west edge of the site north of Mingus Avenue, recorded by Instrument 2018-0058466, shall be retained and additional public pedestrian easements shall be recorded prior to the issuance of public building permits to provide public pedestrian access between Mingus Avenue and blowout trail via other routes acceptable to the developer and the city. Number 15, the developer shall combine parcels to eliminate internal parcel boundaries prior to submittal of building permit applications. Number 16, three-story heights for multifamily and storage buildings are permitted, subject to fire department requirements for the additional height. Seventeen, developer shall coordinate with Cottonwood Area Transit to locate transit stops and dedicate easements for the stops if necessary. Number 18, developer shall enter an agreement with the City of Cottonwood prior to submittal of building permit applications to provide rents at or below an agreed-upon workforce housing level on no fewer than 42 units. And I heard no other stipulations requested.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Glasscock?
Approved.
Approve.
Approved.
Oh, hi, Tina. Are you there for the next one?
Yes.
All right. All right, moving on to the next agenda item. This next agenda item, the second agenda, the third agenda, and the fourth agenda items, they are related, so staff is going to be presenting them all at once, and we will be voting on the motions together as well. This is GP 22-004, a general plan minor amendment of land use. Z 22-009, a zone change from AR 20 to R3. And DR 22-009, a request for design review for a 40-unit apartment complex. Speaking of getting a lot of these.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commission, Tina Hayden, working for Community Development. This is fortunately the last presentation for the night, and as you stated, it is covering the last three items on the agenda. Right now, we're looking at the land use designation. The current land use for the site is VLR, very low residential. The proposed change is to high-density residential. Looking to the west, north, and east, we have medium residential. There is some very low residential to the northwest, and to the south, we have high-density residential. To the west, we also have general commercial. What we're looking at is a small pocket of very low residential land use, so this is fitting for change to a high-density residential use. Here we have the zoning map. The site is currently zoned as AR 20. There are some areas to the northeast and west that are also AR 20, and there are also areas of R2 to the northeast and west, and to the south, we have R4 zoning. Project details, this is a 40-unit multifamily residential. There will be four buildings. There will be eight efficiency units. They are single-story units. There are 16 one-bedroom units, eight stacked units, and eight single-story units, and there are 16 two-bedroom units that are stacked. The amenities, there will be private patio porch for each unit, attached carport parking, 40 spaces. There is a total of 72 parking spaces, but there are 40 that are designated as carport parking. Also, on the site plan, it does show that there is a washer... Also, on the site plan, it does show that there is a washer and dryer in each unit, so there won't be a necessity for an additional building on the site. And this is the site plan. In the center aisle, you can see the additional parking. The areas highlighted in red are the four separate buildings. Each will have the same floor plan, and you can see the 10, each building will have 10 carport parking spaces. This is the landscaping plan. At this time, I was informed that the landscaping plan is subject to change. They will be, the developers will be working with us to adhere to section 407 for landscaping. Here is a closer look at the floor plan. This is the first floor plan. If you'd like, I can go into a little more detail, or since the night is getting a little longer here, we could move on. To move on? Okay. Here we have the second floor plan. Again, if anyone wants any more detail, I'm more than happy to do so. And I'll move on here. We have the south and north elevation. On the top left, that is one of the existing buildings on a different property, so that shows you the relation in height. That is a single-story multifamily building, and the elevations that we're looking at for the project are two-story buildings. We now have the west and east elevation. The top portion is looking from a different property onto the site, and the bottom portion is looking from the middle of the property onto the, one of the buildings. This is a section for Building A and B. On the left, we have, will be the south, which is Birch Street. On the right is going to be North Beach Street, so you can see how the grading will move from south to north downwards, and there's retention ponds on that northern portion. These are our renderings. Here, you can get a look at the colors. In the staff report, I did indicate that there was mostly going to be gray and silver with some blue, and then we have some of the red, and the red brick as well, supporting the columns on the carport. So this, one of the things for this project is a minor general plan amendment. This recommendation for the main and Mingus area, which the project site sits in, does indicate that we should support revitalization efforts. This is also the consolidation of two parcels into one, and with multifamily housing and the proximity to Maine, it stands to reason that there is pedestrian-oriented residential possibilities. For the objectives for the main and Mingus area, it is stated that we should support development for a variety of residential types, and we should encourage infill development and redevelopment. For this project, there are only seven stipulations. First one is to develop the project in conformance with development plans. Second is to, the project shall conform to code review board statements that were issued on July 20th this year. The third stipulation is exterior lighting shall adhere to section 408. The fourth stipulation is landscaping should adhere to section 407. Stipulation five is if there are any future signs in the project, they will require separate permits. Stipulation six is addressing, addressing and street names shall be coordinated with Cottonwood Fire Department, and the last stipulation is a certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completion of the condition should be issued within 24 months of this commission's action. Okay, so this is looking west on Birch Street. We're looking at Maine. This is on the southern portion of the property. Again, on the southern portion of the property. Here, we're looking east away from Maine. Now, we've moved to Beach Street. We are looking west, so you will see 16th Place, and if you can imagine, Maine is beyond those trees. Here, we're looking east away from Maine on the northern portion of the property. I am sorry, this clicker is honorary. So this is from the southern portion, from Birch. We're looking north. There are some properties on this site that will be removed for development of the project. This is again from Birch Street, looking north. Now, we're in the center of the property. We're looking north towards Beach. And again, we are looking, we're actually going to be looking south from Beach, again in the center of the property here. This is the project site, looking south from Beach Street. And this is the property to the north. There's some multifamily housing there. Okay, and this property is also to the north. This is a single-family residence. Here, we're looking at the properties to the south. Again, we have some multifamily residents and some single-family residents here. And it looks like additional single-family residents as well to the south. There is some multifamily residents to the east and some single-family residences as well. Single-family residents to the east of the property, and the last one is a single-family residence, or actually, this was multifamily residence to the west of the property. And that concludes my presentation. I am ready for any questions. We also have the development team for the project available for any questions.
Thank you, Tina. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff?
Yes, thank you, Tina. Good presentation, very well done. What are the highlights, just please, the highlights of any public right-of-way improvements that are going to happen with the project?
To the south on Birch Street, there are going to be curb, gutter, and sidewalk surfacing done. To the north, it is just going to be surface compacted to, for emergency vehicle access, as well as west on 16th Place, there will be surfacing done for emergency vehicle access.
And thank you. Are there going to be any streetlight or traffic improvement components for the project?
None indicated.
Commissioner Glasscock? Commissioner Pelz?
What's the issue with the landscaping, and why is it being brought up again? Is it because of the egress in and out, or is there a single egress?
So with this site plan, it is currently indicated as a one-way. It's a through lot, so people can enter from Birch Street. They will loop around northward and then exit again on the south portion of Birch Street. As far as landscaping, are you wanting answers on planting?
Mainly the parking. It looks kind of confusing. The center parking in the center, is it covered? Is it just a center walkway area, or what is that in the center? Because it looks like it's a real confusing parking situation.
There has been no covered parking indicated. I would say it's just angled parking in the center aisle. Could you reiterate your question?
It's just the egress in and egress out with the parking situation. It just looks like it's really confusing, and it looks like it's just going to be a real mess for emergency vehicles to get in and out of there. The streets don't look like they're significantly widened for the emergency vehicles to get in and out, especially if there's like a fire or something in that area. It just looks like it's really congested.
So for the roadways on both the east and west portion there, it does show that they are roughly 25 feet wide, which is, could possibly accommodate two lanes. Additionally, we are looking at 16th Place, which is west of here, and then also to the northeast Beach Street, we are requiring surfacing so that emergency vehicles can access the property from that way as well.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kling, do you have any questions for staff?
No, thank you.
Vice Chair? I don't have any questions about this one. Would the applicant like to speak?
Sorry, Madam Chair, may I ask one more question?
Yes, you may.
Thank you for the canopy question on the parking area. Why, why wouldn't you put a canopy over the parking area just to protect the automobiles and maybe have an opportunity to put some photovoltaic up later? It seems like a perfect area to do something like that.
Madam Chair, I think that's a question the applicant can answer.
Commissioner Nelson, that'll be perfect for the applicant. Please introduce yourself for the record.
Krishan Ginnigay with SEC. Madam Chair, Commission, thank you very much for the opportunity. I think Tina did a wonderful job, so I'm not going to repeat myself and take the time. However, maybe I will address a couple of things. One, obviously, we talked about circulation, and of course, some other things like utility, sand, drainage, certain things I would like to touch upon, and then if you have further questions, happy to answer them. When we looked at circulation, originally, we looked at one single entrance. Of course, the width of the street would not have changed. However, one of the things I've been looking at to improve the number of parking. In this instance, we are going above and beyond the minimum requirement, because we know that that is one of the biggest challenges that we have. So going through the different orientations, the one-way-in, one-way-out solution came to be one of the most productive solutions. And then also, we did look at the widths of the roads, as well as did some traffic circulation simulations with the fire trucks, just to make sure that it can turn. Of course, there's a Beach Street that it can get access through, so there are certain things that we did look at. Definitely, signing is going to be important to make sure that people understand how to move about, but it's just like any other street, that the signing needs to be looked at and adhered to. Good question about covered parking. I think that has not been something that has been discussed upon up to now, but maybe there would be opportunity for us to introduce something like that in the future, but of course, this is going to be a cost-benefit analysis at a certain point. But the good thing about this design is like, it is oriented in such a way, it can be introduced at any given time, if the developer decides to. The other component is drainage. We are going to be capturing all the drainage on the north side, which is going to take into account the first flush, so the pollutants can be retained within the site, and also try to recharge to some extent. Other than that, the, most of the utilities are within or close to the site, so we are going to utilize those, and we have been in discussion with the utility departments, and up to now, I do not see any major issues. With that, I will be happy to answer any questions you all have.
Further questions from the commission?
Thank you for answering the question on the covered parking and canopy. I'm looking for the ADA parking. We have four stalls, is that right?
That is right.
And staff has already looked at that to make sure that that is within the ratio for current ADA standards?
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioner Nelson, we do look at that. We especially look at it when they submit for their building permits, make sure that it is adequate.
Any questions, Commissioner Pelz?
No further questions.
Any questions, Commissioner Kling?
No, thank you.
Any questions, Vice Chair?
One, and it's just, it's just a curiosity. Are you, are you making any? Is there any thought of putting any type of electric in those carport areas for vehicles in the future? Because you've got a lot of cars in there, and, you know, you just see which way the world's moving. It just seems like it would be very difficult to come back later and figure that out versus maybe making that an upgrade, you know, for the type of renter you're going to have, you know, and amenity. So I was just wondering if there's been any thought of that whatsoever.
Have you thought about electric charging?
I would just say, we haven't thought about it. It's a great idea.
Sir, can you come up to the podium, please?
And please introduce yourself for the record.
I'm Jim Powers, one of the principals of the project. I own a property management company here in the Verde Valley. One of my other partners here is Larry McCrea. He owns a framing company. The motivation for this was really to address many of the affordable housing needs. We, as it relates specifically to a couple of things, one of the covered parking, we do have the covered parking that's on that first floor, and so we hadn't, we hadn't talked about putting any covered parking on the main parking area. We actually haven't, it really, we haven't addressed anything related to electric cars. I think it's a great idea. Certainly, it's something that we could look at doing. Just hadn't been something we thought of.
Do you have any more questions?
I have a question about the dumpster placement while we're talking about the parking. Is, I'm sorry if I missed this in the plans, but is there an enclosure around that, or is that just a dumpster hanging out in the lot?
There will be an enclosure.
Thank you. I was looking for it, and I couldn't find it. I was like, they must have. They must.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to mention that in the landscaping plan, there is going to be landscaping islands surrounding the dumpsters. That is required in the zoning ordinance. Every 15 parking spaces, there needs to be a landscaping island, and they situated them around the dumpsters.
That's helpful. All right, I don't believe we have any further questions for the applicant. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone from the public who would like to speak for or against this project? Please come forward, sir. Fill out the form if you haven't yet, and introduce yourself for the record.
Can't sit here all night without saying something. I'm Phil Trubell. I live in Clarkdale. I developed a apartment complex about 100 yards east of this project about 20 years ago, and for the last 20 years, I've struggled with the water that comes down Birch Street. We've talked to Public Works. That's an area of problem. I know people that have built houses and sold them because they couldn't figure out how to keep them from being flooded. If there's anything that Public Works can do to help work with this developer to resolve that early on, we've blown out our retention basin more than once, because the water comes down Birch Street, comes right in our driveway, right through our project, and blows out our retention basin. So if there's anything that can be done to assist this developer to help resolve that, all of the apartment complexes on the north side of Birch Street have been flooded. So it would be beneficial to look at that early on. Otherwise, I support the project. I think it's great. It's not exactly a real shiny neighborhood that needs pretty fancy-looking apartments. I didn't build very fancy-looking apartments. I looked around the neighborhood, and I said, I'm going to do better than what's there, but I'm going to build affordable housing, and I think that's what you've got here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to direct a question to staff there. I assume engineering took a look at this for the water?
That is correct. When I got this submittal, and I submitted it to all the departments, I believe they had a couple of, actually, I don't think engineering had any comments on this. It was utilities who had some comments, but they didn't affect the overall site plan.
Madam Chair? Madam Chair, this is again, one of those things, when they submit for their permits, they're required to submit all those grading drainage plans. Those requirements come from the code review level again, and engineering does take a look at this. It takes a look at the drainage. All those different aspects of site development do get looked at.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would encourage the developer to check back in with our engineering team on this. We don't always look at off-site water. It comes by the front of the development. It's really about the, the stormwater on the property and what they do with that, and Birch Street is used to convey water. So it, I would, I think Mr. Turbell is, is correct. I would, I would spend extra time on this project on, on the water, not on their property, but the water that could end up on their property.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on this project? I don't see anyone, so I'm going to close the floor to the public and give the commission a chance to make their statements. Commissioner Nelson?
Yes, thank you. Overall, I do support the project. I think it's a, a good location for some multifamily housing. I too live on a street that has some drainage issues from adjoining property, and I think it's, I think it makes a lot of sense. I'm glad to hear everybody say that staff should look at not only the site water, but also the water that's affecting it upstream and where it's going to go. The colors on the project on this one, I would say, take a look at that yellow and maybe come up with something else. And the other thing, I don't know if there is a huge graffiti problem in Cottonwood yet, but the developments I was on before, there were certain anti-graffiti coats you could put on structures like this that would make removal of the graffiti quick and easy. So maybe staff might have a chance to look at that, but other than that, I think it's a great project.
Commissioner Glasscott?
Yeah, I think it's a great project and a good area, and just looking forward to seeing how these actually pan out and start getting occupancy.
Commissioner Peltz?
Nothing more to say.
Commissioner Kling?
So, yeah, I'll, I'll echo what was said before by Mr. Turbell. This, I, I appreciate that as a developer, you saw an opportunity in an area that needs opportunity. This is a great infill project. That, that property has not been a blessing to the neighborhood for a long time. There's new people moving into those neighborhoods and buying those properties and doing work that are going to make them more, more pleasant and also more valuable, which I hope this becomes an impetus for the rest of the neighbors to do the same, and we continue to see this type of infill happening right here. We're not going to have the traffic issues as our prior area. We're not going to have a lot of the same concerns that we did with the, a lot of the projects that we have been approving. This is a true infill project, and, and it's going to be great. I, I also not real happy with the colors, but in that area, I'm not saying it's necessarily a bad fit, but, but I, I wouldn't choose them. Anything you can do to build towards the future, I think, is great. I, I'm glad that you're doing this, and we need the housing, and this seems appropriate, and to your comments, you know, you've kept the cost down by doing the carports and other things, which should help you keep your rent under control, which should help at the end of the day, put people into these houses that may not necessarily be able to afford the other place that we approved tonight. So thank you very much for coming to our community and, and doing something to help our problem, and, and I wish you luck with your project.
I pretty much echo my commissioners on this one. I am in favor of this project. I think that it fits a slightly different need than the project that we just approved. I think it will mostly be more affordable, and it's great infill in a neighborhood where an empty lot is really a blight. So my only comment, I'm so sorry, y'all. I don't like the yellow either.
It's really supposed to be kind of a reddish color.
I think reddish would be much better. So we can add an item for that, or we can just believe in you. Should we choose even them? Okay. With that, I will entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval to the city council for GP 22-004 to change the land use designation from VLR, Very Low Residential, to HR, High Density Residential, for approximately 1.7 acres located 375 feet east of South Main Street and north of East Birch Street at 1642 and 1644 East Birch Street. I also move to recommend approval to the city council for Z 22-00-
Madam Chair, sorry, sorry to interrupt. We need to do one at a time and do the roll call vote.
I apologize. We are saying them all at once, but we're voting in between. That was my fault. Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Nelson?
Approved.
Commissioner Peltz?
Approved.
Commissioner Glasscott?
Approved.
Commissioner Kling? Commissioner Kling?
Approved.
Vice Chairman Garrison?
Approved.
Chairwoman Maston?
Approved.
Unanimously carried. Now we go to the next motion.
I move to recommend approval to the city council for Z 22-009 to change from AR 20, Agricultural Residential Zone, to A 3, or R 3, excuse me, Single Family, Multifamily Residential Zone, for approximately 1.74 acres located 375 feet east of South Main Street and north of East Birch Street at 1642 and 1644 East Birch Street.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Nelson?
Approved.
Commissioner Peltz?
Approved.
Commissioner Glasscott?
Approved.
Commissioner Kling?
Approved.
Vice Chairman Garrison?
Approved.
Chairwoman Maston?
Approved.
Unanimously carried. I'll entertain the last motion.
I move to approve DR 22-009 for the, for a 40-unit residential development subject to the following stipulations. The project shall be developed in conformance with the development plans as submitted to the Planning and Zoning Commission at the October 17, 2022 meeting. The project shall conform to code review board comments dated July 20, 2022, and any additional code review board comments, including the October 10, 2022 letter from City of Cottonwood Airport Manager. Any exterior lighting shall meet the provisions of the city zoning, city's zoning ordinance Section 408. Landscaping shall be installed in accordance with zoning ordinance Section 407.0. Separate permits are required for any future signs. All addressing and street names shall be coordinated and approved by the Cottonwood Fire and Medical Department and shall meet all requirements of the 2018 International Fire Code. And a certificate of zoning compliance documenting the completions of conditions shall be issued within 24 months of the planning commission action. And the only other stipulation I heard was that the developer revisit the colors.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Nelson?
Approved.
Commissioner Peltz?
Approved.
Commissioner Glasscott?
Approved.
Garrison?
Approved.
Chairwoman Maston?
Approved.
We don't have any discussion items on the agenda tonight. Are there any suggested topics for future meetings? I make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.